Good evening, this Monday, June 2nd of 2025. The Lee County Board of Commissioners has now called to order. Welcome, everyone, this evening. If you do have a cellphone, please mute the ringer. But if it goes off, we'll stop and make sure you answer your call, because it's important. That being said, if you would be so kind as to stand for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Galatians 1:10 says, "Am I now trying to win the approval of human beings or of God? Or am I trying to please people? If I were still trying to please people, I would not be a servant of Christ. Gracious God, as we begin this meeting, we pause to acknowledge your sovereignty over all things, including the decisions we make today. We seek not to the approval of people, but the wisdom and guidance that comes from you alone. Please help us to walk in integrity and faithfulness to know what is right in your eyes. Align our hearts with your will, that we may lead with courage, integrity, and faith. Help us to stand firm in truth, not be swayed by opinions, but anchored in your purpose. Grant us wisdom that is pure and peaceable, courage to stand firm in truth, and humility to serve with justice and compassion. May our work honor you above all, as we remember we are first and foremost your servants of Christ. Amen."
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You have the agenda in front of you. I do have an issue, item to add to the special presentation under Item 4A, Proclamation on the Celebration of the Army's 250th Birthday. And so that is on special presentation for Item 4A. Any other changes to the agenda?
There's two other things.
Two other things.
Need to add Item 2M and Item 7D.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. I'm sorry. See, she put add-ons. Usually put the nice little notes on the top of my sheet. All right. We have an add-on for 2M, which is the engagement letter from the Womblebon Dickinson Paul Billow for services related to the $4 million for Central Carolina Community College. And then 7D is consideration of Lee County Board of Education request for pay adjustment. Thank you.
That's adding on to the full agenda, correct?
That's adding on to the agenda, correct.
Okay.
And then the adjustment to the consent agenda.
Okay. Move to approve additional add-ons to the...
Motion's been made to approve the changes to the agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving right along, we have the consent agenda that's amended in front of you. Any questions?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item we have is on the agenda is the public hearing for Central Carolina Community College and Moore Center Financing Public Hearing. And this is...my screen died. Angelina Noel? Angelina here?
I can...I told her I would handle it.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were going to call on her, if you were going to go into it.
Oh.
We need to conduct the public hearing tonight of the Limited Obligation Bond Financing Agreement and the principal amount not to exceed $4 million for the purpose of providing funding, together with other available funds to, A, finance various improvements to community college facilities located at the Moore Center on the campus of Central Carolina Community College, and B, pay certain issuance costs related thereto.
Questions for the manager regarding, before I open the public hearing? Commissioner Martin?
Will you remind me of the associated fees?
Associated fees? Bear with me, I have to pull up an email. Didn't print that.
And then we can go around, and you can catch back on me if that's...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick? I have no questions, thank you. Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves, we are about to open the public hearing on the Central Carolina Community College, Moore Center Financing Public Hearing. The manager started out with requirements to conduct the public hearing on the Limited Obligation Bond Financing Agreement and the principal amount not to exceed $4 million. Did you have any questions regarding this item?
None, just, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
None.
Okay.
I have. I forgot I had the application here beside me. The cost of issuance we're estimating at $180,000.
Seeing no other further questions of the manager, I'm going to open the public hearing on the Limited Obligation Bond Financing Agreement. Public hearing is now open. Anyone who wishes to speak on behalf of the Limited Obligation Bond Financing Agreement, please come forward. And please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Lisa Chapman, and my address is 3190 Deep River Road, Sanford. As serving as the president of the college, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you. We're very supportive of this financing. We are so looking forward to beginning the construction on the biotech building, and you may or may not know, we have served since 2020. We have had over 500 students come through our bio work program. So we are definitely in need of continuing to develop our facility's support of that program, especially with the economic development in this region for biotech. Again, we're very supportive. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else in support of the bond? Anyone opposed to the Limited Obligation Bond of $4 million? Please state your name as well as your address, sir.
David Smoke, 96 North Ridge Trail, Sanford. Good evening, commissioners, as always, thank you for your time. I'm not here to speak against the project, I'm here to speak against the bond. This may not surprise any of you with my reputation for being tight with money, but let me point out a few things. First of all, I really appreciate the briefing packet compiled by Davenport to explain the competing bids, as well as the county manager's proposed budget. If I am incorrect with any of my facts, as always, I apologize. Secondly, I really hate government debt. While I recognize the value of it in tough economic times to stimulate economies, by and large, I believe local government debt enriches people outside our own community, perpetuates the same poor decision-making that impoverishes people with their own debt, siphons away investment capital, and creates an imbalance in local economies competing for various resources such as labor, materials, and space. I understand the 15-year Webster Bank offer is your leading contender, and I will refer to Page 5 of the briefing packet for my figures. For the record, I would clarify that this is not a $4 million loan we receive, it's only 3.82 million that Lee County receives, and 180,000, as already been said. Goes right off the top for fees, that's a 4.5% fee. I've asked repeatedly for more disclosure on these finance and advisor fees, I'm glad this time it was clearly disclosed, instead of obscured as simply being paid from financing proceeds. Over the course of 15 years, we'll also pay 1.577 million dollars in interest, for a total of 1.757 million dollars in tax and fees, to borrow 3.82 million for 15 years. Please note that by including fees into the loan balance of $4 million, we are also financing and paying interest on those fees for 20 years. In finance, there's a concept called the time value of money, and for this loan, that value is about 4.4%. Better than most people get now, but not great, and can I point out how we have over $35 million in our fund balance right now? Turning this situation into a lesson on personal finance and converting millions to thousands, if a friend making 120,000 per year asks me if they should take out a HELOC for $3,820 to remodel a bedroom while also having over $35,000 in various liquid accounts, what should they do? At least for people, the HELOC wouldn't charge additional fees, and the interest might be tax deductible. The county fund balance has grown pretty healthily over the last few years, actually by about $15 million over the past five years. If you look at Page 16 of the projected budget, the budget document cites recommended ratios of fund balance to budgets and expenditures. Let me remind you, there is a difference between budgeted versus actual expenditures. In 2023, 2024 fiscal year, the budgeted expenditures was 105 million, and actual expenditures was only 99 million. That's the last year we have a completed fiscal year. On Page 17 of the proposed budget, the recommended minimum for fund balance is given as 20% of expenditures. We are well over that minimum, even if this 3.8 million is spent on this project. I understand that the proposed budget expects the fund balance to decrease anyways. Go ahead and budget for an additional 500,000 in FY 2027 to the fund balance, because that's where you're going to pay anyways, according to the payment schedule for this bond. Commissioners, I urge you to cancel this debt issuance, but I fully expect the old debt machine to keep rolling along. On Page 23 of the projected budget for 2026, our debt service will be almost 17 million. Imagine what our budget flexibility and personal taxes would be without that 17 million dollar anchor weighing us down now. Imagine how many thousands of property owners' entire tax bill is sent directly to our current debt holders. I applaud you for recent steps taken to slow our slide into debt on capital projects. By stopping this one bond issuance and avoiding the 180,000 in fees, that would pay for the Board of Education pay rates for almost three years, and send a message that we should begin paying for at least some of our smaller projects upfront. By passing this bond and fee schedule while quibbling over the Board of Education compensation, you would be sending a very different message. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in support of the Limited Obligation Bond Financing Agreement for $4 million? Anyone opposed? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have the special presentation, an add-on. And I guess Ms. Comfort's here, so I'll remove that. Just wanted to let everyone know that Carolyn Comfort is with the Daughters of the American Revolution Grady...
Private Grady.
Private Grady chapter. For those of you who do not know, Private Grady was the only lone, at that time, Lee County didn't exist, but he was a long-lost son of this region who fought in the American Revolution. A proclamation celebrating the 250th birthday of the United States Army, whereas on June 14th, 1775, the Second Continental Congress established the United States Army, marking the birth of the American military and the beginning of its fight for freedom and independence. And whereas for nearly 250 years, the Army has stood as a guardian of liberty, providing security to our nation, maintaining readiness and lethality, and promoting peace worldwide. And whereas the courage, dedication, and sacrifice of Army soldiers, veterans, and their families have ensured the safety and prosperity of our nation and the freedom we cherish. And whereas, the United States Army remains steadfast in its mission to serve and defend, building strong ties with local communities and fostering partnerships that strengthen the fabric of our great nation. And whereas, the United States Army remains steadfast in its mission to serve and defend, building strong ties with local communities and fostering partnerships that strengthen the fabric of our great nation...we got to fix that, doubled. Whereas the county of Lee County, North Carolina recognizes the Army's pivotal role in shaping our nation's history, security, and freedom, and now therefore be proclaimed by the Lee County Board of Commissioners that June 14th, 2025, be United States Army Day in Lee County, North Carolina, and urge all our citizens to observe this day with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities presented this second day of June 2025. I have read the proclamation, I would encourage you to urge one to make a motion. Motion's been made to approve the proclamation celebrating the 250th birthday of the United States Army. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And having two Army veterans on the Board of Commissioners, we do appreciate this effort, and thank you. You're more than welcome.
I just wanted to say, I'm also a retired Army veteran, I'm a retired Army Master Sergeant. So in addition to being with the Daughters of the American Revolution, this proclamation is near and dear to my heart, and again, I thank you for that. I'll tell you ahead of time, I'll probably be back for the Marine Corps birthday when it's time to ask y'all for one of those, but I'm going to try to do each of the services. I will share this proclamation with the Lee County Veterans Council, and I will encourage that they share it with their various organizations, the VFW, DAV, American Legion, and all of that. And if the county is able to have it on their social media, thank you ahead for posting it there, too. Thank you very much.
I believe we would be remiss if we didn't have it on the website, especially with Fort Bragg in such close proximity, and I think we have, what, about 6,000 veterans now in Lee County? How many active duty are living here? Trust me, there's a bunch of them out there. All right, next item on the agenda is public comments. We have Mr. Jim Wommack. Sir, you have three minutes, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Jim Wommack, I live at 1615 Boone Trail Road in Sanford. I'm here tonight to express my personal views about two topics, compensation for locally-elected officials and budget priorities. Let me preface my remarks by saying I am a trustee at the community college, but my remarks are my own tonight, and I do not, and they do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the college officials. Having sat in your chair as a commissioner for four years, I completely understand the difficult task that you have in balancing the needs of the community, and weighing priorities, and setting a reasonable budget, and in translating that into tax policy. Late spring of each year, citizens hold their collective breaths while the commissioners deliberate the obligations that they have to make and what the tax burden will be for the next year. This year is no exception. Now, there are some longstanding deficiencies in county budget priorities that continue to fester. They include compensation of our school board employees or members, compensation for salaried non-teaching staff in the public schools, and completion of the Southern Lee High School classroom space and auditorium, which has been a need for over 20 years. First, the school board manages a budget that is 20% to 30% larger and equally complex to what the county manages. Most of our school board members must attend several committee and board meetings each month, along with the countless events and activities they have oversight over, not to mention the extensive peer collaboration with other school boards. Yet these board members have not had a compensation increase, not even a cost of living adjustment, for 23 years. The scope of duties and responsibilities are enormous for this board, and it is responsible to produce 80% of our local workforce, the number-one key for economic growth in our community, according to virtually every economic development expert around the country. 80% of our local workforce. So why does the school board compensate it, why is it compensated at roughly 1/3 of what commissioners pay themselves? This current board is very responsive, transparent, and accountable to the commissioners about every aspect of their budget, their financing, their capital planning, and their administration. They changed the leadership ad and reduced the size of the central office. They've conducted a performance audit to eliminate waste and inefficiency, and the schools have turned around their previous decline in performance. Isn't it time to compensate these officials at the same level that commissioners are paid? As for the upcoming county budget, let me just say a couple of things. One, there's two priorities that should compel your focus. One is on law enforcement, safety, we have to do that. The second is on public education, whether it's at the K-12 or at the community college level. We have continued growth and expansion of the space, so we should be able to keep our tax rate at 65 cents, as recommended by the county manager. The top priorities we should focus on are, again, security or law enforcement and education. We all benefit from a dose of fiscal conservatism as you complete your budget deliberations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the zoning map amendment request to rezon 3.39 acres with frontage on Hawkins Ave, San Lee Drive, and High Street, from light industrial to conditional use permit to light industrial. Amy is present here, and before I get started, please, conflict of interest rezoning text. A governing board member shall not vote on any legislative decision regarding a development regulation adopted pursuant to Chapter 160D where the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on the member. A governing board member shall not vote on any zoning amendment if the landowner of the property, subject to a rezoning petition, or the applicant for a text amendment is a person with whom the member has a close familial, business, or other associational relationship. Does any board member have a conflict with the current applicant? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you, Amy.
Good evening, everyone. This information is on Pages 95 through 105 of your agenda packet, and there's a map of the subject property on Page 105 of your agenda packet. The planning board met on May 19th after the public hearing was held, and recommended by unanimous vote that the commissioners approve the request to rezon 3.39 acres with frontage on Hawkins Ave, San Lee Drive, and High Street, from light industrial with a conditional use permit to light industrial, thereby eliminating the conditional use permit approved in 1994 that only allows the site to be developed with a self-storage facility. In making this recommendation, the board determined that the request is reasonable, given the mix of commercial and industrial growth along Hawkins Ave in this area since 1994, when the original zoning was approved, and noted that the property adjoins other properties owned light industrial and directly fronts onto Hawkins Ave, which makes the site conducive to light industrial development. They also voted that the request is consistent with the planned San Lee land use designation Maker District, because light industrial is included as both a current zoning district and a proposed zoning district. Topics of discussion included the following. The request appears to be reasonable, given the location and land uses in the area, there's already a self-storage facility on the opposite side of San Lee Drive, and all of the land uses permitted in the LI zoning district would be allowed, including a billboard, subject to compliance with the UDO development standards. As a reminder, the commissioners should make two votes regarding this matter. Sample motions are provided for your reference, and you're always welcome to draft a unique motion if you prefer. Also, the commissioners may acknowledge that the zoning map amendment is not consistent with the planned San Lee, and still vote to approve the request. Are there any questions?
Questions for Amy. Commissioner Sharp?
No, I don't have any.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
No, thank you.
Gee, I keep looking over here, thinking you're over here as a civic center. Anyway, all right, we have no questions. Do I have a motion?
Motion to Option 1.
Motion to Option 1 is to, the motion's been made that proposed zoning map is consistent with the planned San Lee use designation of Maker District, because light industrial is included as both the current zoning district and proposed zoning district. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then we have the second motion.
Motion to Option 1.
Motion to Option 1 has been made that the Board of Commissioners approve the proposed zoning map amendment from light industrial with a conditional use permit to light industrial, because it is reasonable, given the mix of commercial and industrial growth along Hawkins Ave in this area since 1994, when the LICU zoning was approved. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Amy. Moving on to the next item.
We have here tonight Ted Cole from Davenport Public Finance. He is here to review the Limited Obligation Bid Bond, excuse me, Limited Obligation Bond Bid Summary, and to share their recommendations for us as we move forward with the $4 million financing. I placed each of your seats a copy of his presentation, it was in the agenda package, but we thought this might be a little bit easier to read here in person.
Great, thank you, good evening. There are page numbers in the bottom right corner of this, and big picture, obviously you've held the public hearing that's required on this. What I'm going to present is the request for proposal process that we did for bank lenders, and at the end of that, might want some direction from you all as to which bank to go with if you want to move forward. And then there is also on the agenda this evening a findings resolution for you all to consider. If that were to be approved tonight, the findings resolution, there would be one additional approval by the county board at your next meeting, called an approving resolution, and then the final approval would be by the local government commission at their July meeting. So this is really the front end of the process here. There'll be at least one more resolution for you all to consider if you move forward this evening at your next meeting, and then it's the local government commission. So this is specific to the RFP and the funding proposals. At the bottom of Page, or on Page 2, remember the page numbers in the bottom right corner, and please stop me if you have any questions. We put a request for proposal together, we've done this a number of times with the county, sent it out to a broad range of banks that often look at these and participate, upwards of 50 banks. Again, we were talking about a $4 million project out at the community college at the Moore Center, and we asked the banks to provide both 15-year and 20-year terms, so we had some options to look. We did receive five proposals listed there alphabetically, Capital One, First National, JP Morgan, Truist, and Webster. Maybe some of these are not necessarily household names, they may not even have a location in the county, but they bid on municipal lending proposals or borrowing requests quite often. We know all of these banks at some level and have closed loans with them, so they are known entities in that regard. Go to Page 3, there's a lot of info on here, but what I'm going to focus on are the top two sections, JP Morgan and Webster Bank. Those were the two that we spent most of our time analyzing, assessing, talking to. And as you work your way from left to right here, you'll see, let's talk about JP Morgan. The first column under Column B is the rate lock, and that's the question that we're answering there, is is that rate locked in now? Is it indicative rate? Is it floating? JP Morgan regularly only provides a rate that's good for 24 hours. So you have to be in a mode where you have a rate, and you can consider approving that rate within a 24-hour period, and if you approve that rate, then you have to go and enter into a rate lock agreement with them, which, among other things, says we are going to borrow X dollars and we'll close by this deadline, and if either of those things don't happen, there's the risk that you would have to pay what's called a breakage fee, which would be calculated by the bank and provided to you, saying, hey, you entered into a rate lock, we didn't close, there's a breakage fee. And so there just is some inherent risk to that, that approach that they regularly provide, that's pretty standard for them. So they do not have a locked rate. You go right below them for Webster, the rate they provided is fixed, there is no rate lock necessary, it's fixed, provided that we accept it by June 3rd, which would be tomorrow if you all decide to move forward, and as long as we close by July 18th, which our schedule would allow us to do that as it's currently contemplated. So that's a fundamental difference between the two. JP Morgan is not locked, and it would require a rate lock agreement, which would expose you to some potential breakage costs, whereas Webster is locked, and if you don't close, no problem. You know... no problem, you know, everybody goes their separate ways. Prepayment, or what we call call provisions, that is basically, do we have the ability as a county to prepay this early? Maybe pay it down with cash or refund it if rates are favorable in the future. JP Morgan gave three options. Option A is non-callable, meaning you enter that loan and it cannot be paid off early ever for any reason. That's going to be their lowest rate, but it's also the rate that is, they're guaranteed to get through the term of the debt. It cannot be prepaid. And then they gave option B and option C, which, option B is you could start prepaying it as early as 2027, or option C as early as 2030. So a number of options for prepayment, and you'll notice their rates kind of make sense when you think about that. Their non-callable option is option A, lowest rate is a 390. The fastest prepayment, 2027, when that would begin, is their highest rate at a 454, and the 423 is kind of in the middle. It keeps you from prepaying for an extra three years, so it protects them for another three years of having that loan. So rate is an indication. Different prepayment provisions or call provisions, and the rates generally follow with options A, B, and C. And so you can see it ranges from a 390 to a 454. They only gave a 15-year proposal, they don't go 20 years. Webster Bank, their prepayment, it's a little bit wordy, but if you look at the 15-year option, essentially what they're saying is you can prepay this loan at, on any date, in whole or in part, subject to the following fee schedule. If you do it, you can't do it before August 1 of '31, so you're not allowed to prepay it before then. Beginning August of '31, going to August of '32, it's at 102%, meaning there'd be a 2% penalty to prepay it. That penalty steps down to a 1% penalty, and after 2033, you could prepay it without any penalty, in whole or in part. Not an uncommon prepayment language for them. Every bank's a little different how they look at that. Their rate for 15 years is a 435. They also gave a rate for 20 years of a 459. And again, their rates are locked. We would need to accept it, which we can do verbally or by email as early as tomorrow if that's the desire, and it's good for a closing by the 18th. And again, if something doesn't get approved later at the June board, the next June board meeting, or even the LGC, there's no breakage. We didn't really dig into those other banks because those two seemed to us to be the most relevant to discuss and to analyze. Any questions on that?
Questions from Mr. Cole. Commissioner Sharp?
None.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Warbick?
Uh, no, sir.
Commissioner Knack?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
None, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Martin? Okay.
Alright, let me keep going. If you go to page four, this has got some similar information to the prior page, and again, JP Morgan Chase on the left, Webster on the right. You've got the rates, you kind of go down the line, you've got the prepayment, their acceptance, their rate expiration language there on line four. Both of them have some bank fees that they would charge, they have bank representation that they'll be using to help review the documents and, you know, on their behalf. So there are bank fees associated, that is included in the number that county manager quoted earlier. Line six is escrow project fund. Both of these banks said that the money at closing can go with the bond trustee and be invested to your benefit. So the loan would close, the full $4 million would come to the bond trustee, and it would be invested at the county's direction, and you'd earn interest on that while the money is sitting there being spent, and you have flexibility from either bank on where to put that. Both of them have to do their final approval, that's not uncommon, a lot of it is just based on documentation. At this point, I would call the approval process with the banks a formality. You know, barring some completely unforeseen event, we wouldn't anticipate either bank having any sort of final approval process problem. We mentioned who their bank attorneys would be, both of those are known entities. And then there's some other considerations, whether the payments are semi-annual or annual. We've talked a little bit about the environmental situation out at that facility and on that piece of property. The banks have gotten comfortable with the work that you all are doing, the remediation that's being done. They've asked to be copied on the various reports that you have to prepare. So really, no other considerations between either Chase or Webster Bank. And as we said earlier, I think it was in the public hearing, the loan itself is secured by the facility and the property out there. So we're securing it, and actually, that property is already securing a loan from 2023. This loan is being issued on a parity basis with the existing debt, so the lenders will share that collateral. That was anticipated back in 2021 when we started this whole process of acquiring that property. We knew that there was a chance that multiple borrowings might be needed to build out the facility and build out the campus, and we needed the ability to come back periodically and borrow, and we needed to be able to secure all of those borrowings, however many there might have been, with those facilities. Didn't want to have to find something new every time we came to borrow funds. So, I'm going to go to page five. This is sort of where the annual debt service comparison comes into play. And so, left-hand side of the slide, JP Morgan 15-year, we've run sort of the non-callable. Column B is their non-callable, their lowest rate. Column C is their rate with the 2030 prepayment, that 423 rate. Webster Bank, we've run it at 15 years and 20 years, and then on the far right is the planning analysis that was in our capital planning model for this borrowing, right? This was a borrowing that was always included in the planning model, so we wanted you to have that for comparison. Across line seven, all of these will have what we call a par amount, or a loan amount of $4 million. That's what the nominal par amount of principal that will have to be repaid is an even $4 million. And as one of the speakers at the public hearing said, on line 11 is the project fund. What do we net out of this to put towards the project? And you'll see that's right around 3.82 million across the board, right? The difference being the cost of issuance allowance there, the 180,000. And we're fine-tuning that, we may find that that can be trimmed back a little bit, we're still collecting those costs. But the expectation at this point is that the cost of issuance would be paid for from the borrowing, although that's not absolutely required if the county decided they wanted to pay for issuance costs out of pocket. That's certainly possible if that's your desire. So 4 million is the par amount of the loan, the net proceeds to the project, 3.82 across the board for all of these options. And then we go down and we show what the annual debt service is. Debt service on these is not going to start till fiscal '27. We purposely set it up that way so that it wasn't a consideration in the FY '26 budget. So debt service is starting in FY '27, and you kind of see across the line in any given year what the annual debt service is, and down at the very bottom, line 41, what the total payback is over the life of the loan, whether it's 15 or 20 years. And that total payback on line 41 is principal plus interest. Okay? Column D there in the middle, that is the recommended option. We have had calls with staff, including bond counsel, reviewed all of the proposals, looked at the planning model, sort of assessed the differences, and we've come to a collective recommendation of column D, Webster Bank, 15 years. So you can kind of see what those annual payments are. We're not wed, we're not locked into that as our option. You all can certainly choose to do something differently this evening if you'd like, we just need to talk through what those other preferences might be. But for now, that column D is what's being recommended. Little bit higher than the far-right planning model, right? The payments for the first few years are a little bit higher. We've already run the 15-year Webster through the model, and it works fine. The model had actually assumed a 20-year payback, but we can get it done with a 15-year payback because we got a slightly better rate than what was in the planning model of 5%. Any questions on that slide?
Questions, Commissioner Martin?
No, very clear, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Knack?
Thank you.
Commissioner Warbick?
I don't have any questions on this slide in general, but I do know one of the public comments stated that it would be like $1.7 million in interest, so I just wanted to say that was like $113,000 a year if you did the 15-year option. So I think my question's going to come back to, do we get a moment to question on the county manager's staff for this? Or would this be now?
You may right now.
Okay. So if, so I guess I'm going to phrase it two different ways. If $4 million came from the general fund, what the tax rate would that incur? And then if, or another way to phrase it, if we had changed and added $4 million to the budget, what tax increase would that be?
I'll wait for just a second, so $4 million added to?
Four point...
I know. I didn't want to do my quick, sorry, I didn't want to be responsible for that math.
That's more than four. Two, two, seventy-two. That would be 40 cents.
Four.
Forty.
Penny's worth of a million dollars.
Just under a million dollars. A penny's worth $992,272 projected for next year.
So $4 million coming out of the '26 budget would require the equivalent of four pennies on the tax rate to generate it, right?
Right.
Give or take.
Okay, which would be more than $130,000 a year.
I'm sorry, it's .4 of a penny.
Point four, yeah, I knew what you guys were saying, I'm sorry.
I'm doing taxes.
I knew what you guys were saying.
Yeah, sorry, that's my fault. It's four, .4 cents, point four of a cent.
Yeah, the annual debt service at 400 and some thousand dollars is the equivalent of about a half a penny worth of revenue.
Okay, okay, that was...
May I also add that, based on our debt plan that we have been following, we can do this project without a tax increase. If we do this debt service.
Yes, agreed.
That's for the debt.
Okay.
Operations, when they get it up and running, is a different story.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
Okay. Page six is in there just really to talk a little bit about the market, and I won't belabor this because with, if we move forward, if you were to decide to move forward with Webster, that rate is locked. You're not, you're not subject to market movement. It's really there to just show that we've seen quite a bit of volatility in interest rates, particularly over the last two months or so with, starting with the tariff information, and it was on again, off again, and we saw quite a bit of movement in rates. A lot of uncertainty about where the economy is headed, inflation, the job market, and as a result, there's not a lot of clarity or consensus. What we tend to see is the market reacts to whatever news is out there in any given day, or whatever economic releases, and so it can react to a piece of news one way, the next day, you get something else, and it just tends to be quite volatile. And I think that's just indicative of the lack of conviction about the medium and long-term economic outlook. And I mention that because with the JP Morgan, we would, we're floating with the market until we're comfortable locking their rate, and while we're floating with the market, we would be sort of, you know, we would be exposed to those, that rate movement, and again, locking the rates sooner than later, just, it would create that situation where if anything were to disrail the borrowing, we might have a breakage fee to pay. So this was in there to just talk about the volatility in the market and why in this particular case, our recommendation is contemplating the Webster because it is fixed and we're not subject to those, that rate movement. Which takes me to page seven, which is essentially the recommendation, 15-year Webster, 15-year minimizes the overall interest expense of the borrowing, it's shorter than 20 years. And while Webster didn't have the absolute lowest rate on the day of the proposal, it was the lowest rate that was fixed without a rate lock requirement. And in all of our conversations with staff, we just felt like that was, for a number of reasons, the best approach. And if that is y'all's desire, again, we would be looking for just some direction on that, whether it's a verbal direction or somebody wants to make a motion at some point, that's fine, that's all we would need. The findings resolution that's on your agenda doesn't approve the bank. So the findings approval makes a series of findings, we would ask for you to consider giving us direction on the bank option, and then when you come back, we come back on June 16th for your final approval, all of the Webster information will have been dropped into the financings. So, public hearing's been held. At some point tonight, you'll consider a findings resolution, and we would also ask you to consider giving us direction on the bank financing if it's, if you want to proceed.
Further questions? Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Warbick?
No, sir.
Commissioner Knack?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
I have a couple of questions, probably not so much on the presentation, but maybe to county manager. Is, I'll start with the larger question. What is the, what are the negatives? Is there a negative to paying the 3.8, you know, to paying the nearly $4 million from our fund balance rather than taking one?
It just inhibits your future plans. Yes, we may be in a population group where the minimum recommended now is 20%. The board has a policy, financial policies that it has adopted, that says our goal is to be at 32%. We're slightly over that, we're still well below most of our group that's now over $100 million budget. We are still well below. It inhibits you, if you take that $4 million out of fund balance, if we find land for some project that we want to go ahead and buy, it's going to inhibit you with that type of things. It will inhibit you if the schools come to you and ask you to go ahead and buy land, it's going to start limiting the options you have. If a hurricane comes through here, like went through the mountains, it will hurt you there because you're not going to have as much funding available and cash on hand to upfront cost that these areas are having to upfront after these storms. That is the biggest issue.
That makes sense, that makes sense. And I know that there's a, the history of this board, because specifically, I think the hurricane is to keep the fund balance higher than even is required, is that correct? For those very reasons?
For that and the other reasons I just mentioned to you, it's the flexibility. I'll also say some of what's in our fund balance still is restricted funds from the ARPA revenue loss funds that we have and some other options. So it is not all completely available.
Would we, is it possible to consider, so if we do take the loan at 15 years, we would be at 1.4 million in interest only, right? And that, am I correct in that? From looking at those numbers? Wait a minute here. Can, is that correct, 1.4? So we'll pay 1.4 million in interest to borrow that money? And then we'll also pay 180-ish in fees?
That's included in the 1.4.
That is included, okay. All right, I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Okay.
Kirk, may I ask one more?
Please.
Sorry. So one of the, I was trying to take notes while you were speaking, so I may have, I may be misquoting you, I should say. You, I'm paraphrasing, something about there would be interest and the county could apply it in the manner they see fit. Can you go back to that part? I'm sorry.
Sure. So if you were to move forward with this borrowing, we would close on, just pick a date, July 12th. All of that money would come to an account that the county controls.
Okay.
And you all direct the investment of that, you know, within state statute. And you all direct the investment of that, in it, you know, within state statute. Probably the North Carolina Capital Management Trust, right? That's where a lot of local governments choose to put these types of funds. So that money would come all at once, and would go into account, an interest-bearing account, and you would be earning interest on that while the money is being spent.
Okay.
So during the, the spend-out or the construction period, there is some interest earnings on that money that you will make, none of which have been accounted for.
I was gonna say, is there a reason, that was gonna be my next question. So that's what, I did hear you correctly on that. Is there a reason that the, 'cause it's just so volatile on what the choice is and what can be had? So there could be a potential for an incremental small amount of interest earned that could roll back into this, correct? Okay.
That's right. And that interest earnings, whatever the amount is, it'll, it'll be a function of how long the money sits there, and what's the rate. The rate, I believe, is, be four and a quarter right now, give or take 4.25%.
Okay.
Now, that, that could change. It could go up, it could go down.
Oh, yes, 100%.
But whatever amount of money is earned, you could
Reinvest, re- put back in.
Re- reimburse yourselves, you can use it to pay the first debt service, you can apply it to the project.
Perfect, okay.
You could also use it to offset the next project related to this that's coming, the 1.9 commitment that you also have, so you could take the earnings off this project to offset your borrowing on the next one.
Okay.
Because this is not restrictive to this one particular project, it is projects at the Moore Center.
Okay, all right, thank you so much for that clarity.
I, I also have one more question. You, you mentioned the prepaying possibility, to prepay after the, you know, once we've hit this certain term and
Right.
knowing the restrictions. Have we ever prepaid a debt?
Yes, ma'am. We routinely, with Davenport's help, keep an eye on all of our financings, and if a refinancing comes up, option, they bring it to our attention, and we have taken care, taken advantage of those several times. I think we refinance the original Southernly High School, what they were called, COPS back then, certificates of participation, at least twice during the tenure of that debt.
Yeah, and there's, that, it's, we very often see debts be refunded, just like you might do with a mortgage, right? Take advantage of what was a 20-year mortgage is now a 10-year mortgage, and it's a, maybe it's even a lower rate, and you can refinance and reduce your payment. The other option, if you ever got there, is you could pay off, not refund it, but just pay it down.
And we have also, I think, I'm sorry, Commissioner Martin, I, I made clarification. I think we have, in my tenure, repaid or paid one early.
Okay, thank you.
I don't remember the exact one it was, but I do believe we paid one completely off early, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation by Davenport to award the bid to Webster Bank?
With the 15-year option?
With the 15-year option?
Before we, before, oh, go ahead. Would it make sense to at least pay the, the 180,000 in Trump fund balance, so that we're not paying interest on that?
You can't always do that, you know, I, this doesn't
I know, but
This doesn't agree that you don't do that in the future, correct?
Okay.
You can always, what's your question? But to her question is to pay the fees upfront, not a fund balance, but you, you can always do that.
We can do that once, just so, just rather than paying it over 15 years.
That was a question?
This motion doesn't exclude you from doing that in the future, correct? Paying the fees.
We, each issuance will deal with that itself, if you want to pay the fees out of this one. You just need to know that, so that we know what to do with closing.
When do you need to know it by?
Now.
It'd be best to know it now, so we can move ahead with the project ordinance and the funding of how that's gonna be.
I mean, I'd like to pay as little interest as possible.
And we need to adjust the application.
Now, did you say these fees were negotiable as well?
Pardon me?
Are the fees negotiable with the bank in terms of how much you pay them?
I think most of everything that's made up of that are contractual, I mean, you know, if manager was to call and say, hey, is there, I suppose, we would take that phone call, and I'm sure others would, but they've been agreed to, but that doesn't mean they can't be amended.
Any other discussion on the, your motion, and then you're asking the question on the fees?
So maybe, would it be appropriate if I make a motion to pay the, the fees upfront, and then you make the motion that, that you want to make, or?
Okay, attorney?
I'd say, I think we have one mo- somebody already made the motion to do the Webster Bank,
Correct.
which I think is in and of itself one thing. Then maybe move to another item, which is about the fees.
Okay.
That'll work.
All right, everybody understand what we're doing? All right, motion's been made, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you wish to make a motion, Ms. Martin?
So I'll make a motion to pay the fees and the, the 15, let me make sure I'm using the right terminology here. To pay that upfront and, and not
The cost of issuance fees?
Yes. To pay that upfront, so it's not included in the loan.
Not included in the loan?
Correct.
Or not pay it out of loan money?
Correct.
The full four million borrowing would go to the project.
Yeah, so you could still, the approval was for four billion.
Let me ask another question then. Is there a way, and maybe this is to the county manager and, and you, is there a way to, to take the four million and pay the fees straight away, so that we're not paying interest over 15 years on it?
The question is whether or not you're wanting to borrow, I think what Nina knows, do you want us to borrow four million, or do you want us to borrow 3,820,000? I mean, the community college knew that, the, the community college knew our commitment to them was four million minus closing cost. That has been stated to them all along, that, that, because typically, that's what we do with our closing costs, they go into the proc- they come out of the proceeds. That's 32 years, that's what we've done. So that's the question I think we need to know, is if we are going to borrow four million now and help the community college out on this project a little bit, 180,000 more?
Yeah.
Are you gonna reduce the borrowing down to 3,820,000?
3.8, yeah. I apologize that this is taking a little long here, but I, I do not want to withhold money from the community college, nor do I want to hold up their project. So, knowing that, I would, I'm asking if we can give the community college access to the loan as soon as, as, as we approve today, in the amount of 3,820,000 dollars, and that the county would pay the remaining fees out of our fund balance, if necessary, as a one-time payment, so that we're not paying interest for 15 years on that value.
So we would have a loan amount of 3,820,000 with no closing costs, the full 3,820,000 would go to the project. And the, any cost of issuance would be paid for by the county out of county funds.
That is my motion.
So we don't need the four mil- the loan would just be reduced a tad, which is totally fine. All of our approvals are not to exceed.
That's his mission, that's your motion, what he just paraphrased.
That is correct.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk? She got it. Any further discussion? Question?
Will the community college agree to getting less than the four million?
They're getting the same amount.
They would be getting the same amount, they were gonna get net of the closing cost.
All right.
Yep.
Good question, any other questions?
And that would change the amount that we pay?
Payments will go down a little bit, yes, sir. From what's in our book.
And there'll be no change to the college. So the only change will be that we pay a little less in interest.
No other questions? You've heard the motion.
Move to approve.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole, next item.
Yes, sir. The next item is the resolution that Mr. Cole referred to. Prior to considering this resolution, the board does need to take action to waive its policy to take action the same night as the public hearing.
Motion waived, pause.
Have a motion to waive the policy on the public hearing and take an action on the same evening? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, we've waived the policy, next item?
Yes, sir. I'd like to introduce the resolution for your consideration. The resolution making certain findings and determinations regarding the proposed financing of various improvements to community college facilities, approving the purchaser, and requesting the local government commission to approve the financing arrangement. You've had the resolution available for your review in your agenda package. I'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have about the resolution.
Questions on the resolution, Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
Commissioner Vorbic stepped out, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, only aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Thank you.
Okay, we have the resolution. Any further, no further questions, we have the motion to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, say that again, please?
Aye.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, okay. I was like, didn't hear very many. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item up for the agenda is the Lee County Fiscal Year 2026 budget.
Mr. Chairman, may we go back, who made that last motion?
Last motion was made by
Mark.
Yes, Mark, I'm sorry.
Well, I made the motion.
No, he made the motion to waive the policy.
We waived the policy.
Thank you.
Well, who made the motion to?
Oh, he did make the motion.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Connect made the motion to approve the resolution. Waive, approve.
Thank you.
All right. Next item up for the, is the Lee County Fiscal Year 2026 recommended budget from the county manager, Lisa Mentor, you have your slides in front of you. You are up, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm happy to present to you tonight the recommended annual budget for the fiscal year 2526. This budget has been derived after receiving a directive from the board on May 6th to do a budget with a zero-cent tax adjustment. So this budget has maintained the property tax rate at 65 cents. Just a little bit of information for you. The 2025 median home value in Lee County was 216,400 dollars. At the recommended property tax rate, that equates to 1,406.60 for the median home. Other goals that went into the budget development were to provide the county employees a meaningful wage increase based on our policies, provide staffing and other operational costs for Lee County Athletic Park, and provide staffing and other operational costs for the new Lee County Library, also to increase the county's investment in education. We'll move into the revenue assumptions for 2526. This, there is a 5.79% increase in projected property tax revenues. That is maintaining the current tax rate and reflects that 5.53% increase in our tax base. We have raised our collection rate from 99% to 99.25% based on the continuous outstanding job done by our tax department and collections. There is very limited projected sales tax growth in this budget. It nets to 0.23%. In the current budget, we had budgeted a 2% growth. We are not getting there. We are below 1% in our growth in the county's tax collections. So I have budgeted a very conservative 1% growth for next year, which actually, if you look at this year's collections, that may not be conservative, that may be aggressive. But that netted out to a 0.23% because we've done it based on the yes-year's projection, which will be below. We've also seen a significant increase in some of our operating revenues to the total of 16.77%. That is coming from the microtransit program, the LECAP revenues from the new park, municipal elections, and register of deeds. Overall, the projected revenues for fiscal year 2526 are 119,389,086 dollars, which is a 5.72% increase. Our property taxes are based this year, are going into next year, will be 9,991,281,000. That represents a 523,194,000, million, excuse me, 194,000 increase, which is 5.53%. The big portion of that this year has gone to motor vehicle estimates. Our collection rate, as I stated, has increased to 99.25%, which is an increase, rounded out to an increase in our per penny levy of 54,206 dollars. That which led to an increase in revenue of 3,523,424 dollars, or a 5.78% increase. Sales tax, as I stated, our current year growth was budgeted at 2%. And we are estimating next year a 1% budget over our current projected. Our total budgeted sales tax for next year is 24,469,368 dollars, and that encompasses all the different pieces you see there, including the restricted sales tax. And that is only 0.23% over the current year's budget. Expenditure assumptions. We are mostly, we are affected by several different areas, one being the personnel impacts. According to D2 in our personnel policy, we have a continuation of our pay plan that approximates to 1% to 2% for a big chunk of our employees. The cost of living adjustment is 2.8% for your financial policies. We've seen another state instituted retirement contribution increase. We have new, 17 new positions included in the recommended budget out of the 28 that were requested. Health insurance premiums have also increased. We'll be going into more detail on these things shortly. We have also seen increased operating costs at new and existing facilities. We're faced, just like everybody else, with inflationary increases. We have the new Lee County Athletic Park and the new main library coming online. Property and liability insurance increases. We've had lots of mandatory computer upgrades included in this budget, and we have the Moore Center ongoing operation expenses. Increased investment in, in education. Lee County Schools will be receiving a 3.9% current expense increase. We fully funded the capital request from Lee County Schools, and we have increases in current expense and capital funding for the community college. Total projected expenditures for 2526 are 119,389,086 dollars, or a 5.72% increase. Personnel impacts for current employees, we've included the 2.8% COLA based on the county's financials policies. And the adjustments based on the pay plan are 1.8% to 2.16%, which again, is again, according to our D2 of our personnel policy. Those adjustments in the appropriate fringes came to 1,576 million, or 1.576 million. Health insurance premiums, we had to, we've included an increase of 3%, and that came out to 72,900 dollars. That did drop from what we were looking at back at the retreat in January, where we were afraid we were gonna be faced with 8% increase. So we, our broker did manage to help us reduce that. Retirement and contribution increases, we were required by the state to increase the law enforcement and the regular employee rate, and that amounted to 194,193 dollar increase. We had several reclassifications asked if we're in the budget. In addition to that, our per, policy recommends that we look at a third of our employee, our classifications each year, and those market study adjustments, along with the ones requested and approved, amounted to 110,348 dollars. Personnel impacts for new positions, as I said earlier, we had 28 new positions requested. There are 17 recommended. I will make one correction here on general services. You'll see there's three, and it showed three as recommended, that is only supposed to be two in general services. You can find a more detailed list on page 17 of your budget book that you received on Friday. Just to go through this, administration requested one position and received none. Community support requested two and received one. That one position is 75% funded by opioid funds. IT requested a new position, did not receive it. IT requested a new position, did not receive it. DSS requested one position. That one position is approved, and it is funded at least 50%. Colts requested two new positions to assist with the new microtransit system, and those two positions are approved and will be funded through the revenues coming in from the microtransit system. Senior Services requested one position and it was not recommended. General Services, as I said, asked for three, and they're receiving two, and those two positions will be onboard to serve the athletic park and the library. Library requested five positions, and five positions are recommended, however, they are staggered through the year based on the potential move into the library. Parks Recreation requested five more positions beyond the two that you approved earlier this year, and those five have been recommended. The Sheriff requested three positions for the Sheriff's Department, those are not recommended, and the Jail requested two, and those are not recommended. The recommended positions account for $1,28,452 in this budget. Operating impacts, as I said, we continue to face inflationary increases in utilities. The medical contract for the jail that you just recently approved did have an increased cost in it. Food contracts for the jail and senior services continue to cost us more. We saw increases in all the contracts we have with the city. We continue to see fuel costs fluctuate, and the cost of vehicles continues to go up. More specific operating impacts, Parks and Recreation, the majority of their increased budget related to the new opening of the Lee County Athletic Park. They're expecting utilities to run probably around $80,000. Increased maintenance cost of $32,000. Public internet connection of $17,500. Other professional services related to the park will be $40,000, and other expenses are $17,000. The library, new library, we're expecting increased utility cost of $47,950. And that, just want to point out that while the new library, we do expect to have a reduced utility cost, in fiscal year 2025-26, we will have utility bills for both facilities until we can get completely moved out of the new, the old library. At that point, General Services will take on those utility bills until we sell that facility. So the sooner we put it on the market, the soon, less time maybe we'll have to keep paying those utilities. There is increased temporary salaries to add additional hours for assistance in moving preparation and increased staffing needed to cover hours and space at the new facility. General Services is, in addition to personnel, is increased professional service cost due to new buildings of $10,000, and the Moore Center hazardous waste monitoring. As you all know, we've had, we acquired the facility, and with the Moore Center facility, we acquired a hazardous waste issue. We had thought it would be resolved much sooner than it's going to be, and so we have been paying the monitoring costs out of the project. We need to move those costs since it's going to be ongoing into our operating budget because it is the county's responsibility to cover that. So that's $116,813 that was added to the General Services budget this year. Lee County Schools, the current allocation for Lee County Schools is $21,507,824. The requested increase was $3,609,256, bringing their total request to $25,117,80. That request was to cover the full implementation of the pay plan, operational increases of $746,983, and personnel, I'm sorry, that should not be personnel, well, it's personnel requests, but it was supplement changes for various groups of staff of $852,525. Recommended current expense increase is $838,806, or 3.9%. The total recommendation would be $22,346,630. The difference, which is between the request and what's recommended, is $2770,450. That would equate to 2.792 cents in property tax rate that would have to be levied. The request for capital outlay was $1,900, I'm sorry, that did not get updated from last year. Their recommended capital outlay is $289,000, which is a $94,800 increase. And you can see here, there's the 10-year history of our current expense funding increases for Lee County Schools. For the community college, the current allocation is $3,800,000. They requested $4,023,26, or 223,26 in difference. The current expense recommended is $3906,400, which is an increase of $106,400. We'll continue to fund, the budget continues to fund the College Promise Program at $250,000. The Moore Center request was $83,630. We've recommended $754,682. The Civic Center request from the General Fund is $64,930, and that is recommended, and they requested $296,000 in capital, and that was recommended. Wanted to make sure everybody understands the debt capital reserve funding. For many years now, we've been allocating a specific amount of the tax rate each year to debt service, to either cover the current year's debt service or to, and/or to put money into the capital reserve funding. After the revow, the rate was set at 6.34 cents. To accomplish this year's budget with the new projects that are coming onboard, to accomplish that without raising the tax rate, I have reduced the amount that's committed to debt service from 6.34 cents to 5.34 cents, and it would increase the amount taken from our capital reserves. I have asked Davenport to look at the ongoing. We can still cover the $4 million that we have committed to tonight through that with the no-tax increase right now. In summary, here's a wonderful graph that Ben McCreary, our budget analyst, prepared. It shows you on the left-hand side of the page, the ad valorem tax are the revenues, and it shows you the expenses, and you can see that education accounts for the largest portion of our budget on the expenditure side, and that 30 million, 39, 30.39 million does not include debt service that's allocated for the schools and the, nor the SRA's budget. So you can see there, again, our budget is $119.39 million, and you can see pretty much what areas receive those funds. On another note for the solid waste fund, we are again going to have to raise the fees to cover the cost in that fund, so the actual disposal fee will go from $75 to $80. The collection fee is also going from $75 to $80, so it's a $10 increase if somebody pays both fees. Next steps, you scheduled a budget work session for Monday, June 9th at 4 o'clock PM. I will ask if there are any particular departments, after having a chance to review the budget message over the weekend, if there are any of the particular departments that you want to hear from at that hearing.
Question, Commissioner Sharp, do you have any departments you would like to hear?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
As it relates to this Monday?
The work session?
Yes, sir.
I don't think we can afford to have anybody come.
I heard that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
I mean, I believe that there's no appetite to change from the tax rate that's been proposed. It would be unfortunately a waste of time for any of our people to come speak to us.
Okay. Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Mark?
Jeez, maybe I'm the only one who's curious. Can I, can I ask a question across the table?
Please.
Okay, I'm just, I'm piggybacking off of what you said, Taylor. I agree with you that there's no appetite to change, that there's no appetite to change the tax rate, but does that mean that there's no appetite to change the, to talk about the budget itself? For example, let me start by saying, I know this was a lot of work for the county manager, and I know it's a tight budget, but it does, it, it is, it's almost, it's like when I look at the breakdown and I see that the, our public safety, the sheriff got zero requests for staff, and the jail got zero, but Parks and Rec got five, and they already got two a couple months ago. So they have seven new staff, but our public safety gets literally zero for the chair and the sheriff, and our library gets five, albeit, albeit staggered. I'm, I'm sitting here as a commissioner thinking, geez, our responsibilities are the, our, our responsibilities are to the taxpayer, as we've said, but to provide for our public safety in our schools. So while I agree that there's not a lot of space for, or conversation space for upping the tax rate so that we can do everything, I wonder if it would behoove us to take that session and discuss, you know, at least with the sheriff, like how are, you know, how are, like how is this going to work for you this coming year with no more staff? Should we, as a team, sit down and talk about, you know, the breakdowns in the, like, you know, the library, for example, might we, might we hold off some programs that we could run this year even though we have this beautiful new facility and hold off until we have more money from our growth that's coming, and instead pay for whatever the sheriff needs or whatever the jail needs? So my, I guess ultimately my question is, is, do I, the question was, is do I want to hear from anybody at the work session? I'd like to hear from the sheriff to see how he's planning to abide no increase.
Okay.
Thanks.
So we have the sheriff. Did you want to include the library on there? I heard you discuss that.
No, I know that libraries in need. Again, I, I have to fall back to, we're required to, to make sure of public safety. I think the sheriff, and I would, I would be happy with that.
And then open discussion on other items in the budget?
Pardon me, say it again, please.
Oh, you, I, I heard you say you wanted to discuss the budget.
Correct.
Just the open session topic?
Correct, for the Board of Commissioners and, and the county man, and county.
Okay. Would you be able to make the four o'clock, or would you prefer six?
Whatever the board would like, it's fine.
Whatever the board would like, while I was reaching out to make sure you could make it. Do I have a motion to move from four o'clock to six seeing that we've reduced the number of departments?
Sure.
That allow Commissioner Connect to arrive?
Absolutely. Motion to move from four to six.
All right. Any, the motion's been made to move from four o'clock to six, as we do not have a plethora of departments to address. Any further discussion? How about you, Coach?
We're good.
Okay, you'll, okay.
I can be there.
No practice?
Nope.
Okay. So, all those in favor to move from four to six? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've changed the time. We'll have the library, excuse me, the sheriff there, and we'll discuss budget topics as we digest this monster.
Yeah.
Okay, we got that.
Is that the only department you want if we're going to have the meeting?
Well, you know, I'd like to hear from the schools, but I know that that's going to cause a, an issue. And my question with, with the, the schools is, is how much, how much, how much money do we, do we have to move around inside of our budget, right? I'm looking at this budget, and it's really tight. It's really tight. And my biggest concern right now really is public safety. So I, I'm, I'm okay with just the sheriff.
It's likely to get tighter since he was okay with zero. An invite might entice him to go ahead and ask for what he really wants.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the county manager has talked to the sheriff, and he has agreed to what she's recommended. I'm just.
I understand, and, and we're welcome to not, you know, you can, I mean, the motion is there. I'm, if we don't, if it doesn't move forward, then it doesn't move forward.
Well, if I told you no, and you invited me in, I'd be expecting something in exchange for, for coming in.
Is it, is, it's, it's a real question. Is it not possible that we all sit down and have, I mean, is this, is that space for us? Is this meeting that we're talking about having to this budget workshop, is the, is the purpose of that sort of for us to sit down and talk about what the seven of us feel? No? No? Okay.
Well, usually it's just, it was, it was always put aside for departments to come and advocate for what they're liking or asking for in the budget.
I understand.
It can also be intended for y'all to be able to have a discussion amongst yourselves of various things in the budget. It's just over the history of about the last 15 years. It started where we had everybody, every single department come in and make a presentation. It has dwindled down to just the major ones with increases or requests that maybe weren't funded, but it's always up to the board's discretion what you want to hear.
Okay. I, I would propose that we use the time for this, for us to sit down and hear from our county manager as a group to discuss the breakdowns of the personnel impact under new positions. Specifically, is it, would it, you know, do, do we, as a board of commissioners, want to look differently at the original request from the sheriff for the five staff members that he asked for? Do we want to consider that? This is recommended, right? But do we want to talk about changing some of the recommendations so that we can fund employee for the sheriff, either at the jail or the sheriff department?
I guess what's the difference between what we're currently doing now and then June 9th? So you, because everyone needs more time to digest what was presented? Is that the idea?
Yes, and we haven't heard from, I mean, do we, do we know the, I, I don't know the details of where the sheriff is at, and, and even if we, you know, I can leave and go meet with him, and that, that may be the appropriate.
I guess the, also the clarity is, what is, if the county manager has spoken with certain departments, and she's bringing a recommendation, and you're saying, oof, your recommendation isn't quite good enough, I'd like to vet it out myself. What's the purpose of the county manager?
Oh, my God. What's, I mean, that.
Yeah, like, I guess that's where we're, we're getting.
Hypervent, because there's a huge purpose for the county manager.
But, but by saying you need to speak to the sheriff to make sure you feel good with her recommendation of zero versus his, his.
Well, I was, what I was saying is, is, is that if, if it was the desire of the board not to have the sheriff come in, I could take the initiative to go and talk to the sheriff on, on my own, is what I was saying. And let me get to the greater point of, since the county manager recommended this, am I challenging her, or am I saying that I, you know, that I want to do my own research? Because mm, no, is the answer. The county manager oversees everything in the county, and, and on the ballot was the athletic park and the library. And so she's in the position where she's wrestling through how to fund all of these, all of these needs, or, or, you know, needs that, that we have, who want to run these at full capacity. And the library asks for additional staff, more than this is my understanding, and this is already scaled down. Not only scaled down, but scaled down to stagger, right? So it's already, it's weaned, and then it's weaned again. It's a super tight budget. But ultimately, the, the, the decision lies with us, not with the county manager. The decision lies with us to where do we want to put the funding for the staff? And so all I'm proposing is, is I hear the recommendations, I understand why they exist. Might we consider, after hearing the recommendations, that we would like to put a yes in the column of the sheriff department and a soon in the column of something else? Maybe, I mean, I, I looked at library, but you know, I'm, there's not much here. It, we're, you know, there's not, like, there's a lot of, of options, right? But seven new Parks and Rec, and five new library, and zero sheriff in jail, doesn't resonate well with me. It, it just doesn't. So I don't think it's good messaging. I don't think we're sending our, I mean, I think our message is, is let's go Parks and Library, and the sheriff, he can, he'll, he'll make two, and I don't agree. So that, that's where I, I stand with that.
All right, so we have the motion to move the meeting to 6:00 PM. All right, so we have the motion to move the meeting to six PM. And we will be hearing from the sheriff and we'll discuss the budget topics that we decipher after we digest some of this.
Hold on, let me, I share your passion for law enforcement, I, I really do. And one of the things, if we're gonna meet with the sheriff on the night, I'd like for staff to give me some idea of what it would cost to bring the jailers' salaries up to the deputies', road deputies' salary. And have that as a part of the discussion, uh, he's been dealing with that a couple of years now. And the jailers, in my own opinion, are more at risk than the average person. So I think that if we're gonna have a discussion, let's include that.
I really appreciate that, I have heard some surprising reports, uh, from, from the jailers on there. I, I to, yes, I, I like that, thank you for suggesting.
Okay, there's the motion, change the time to six, we'll hear from the sheriff. Topics regarding law enforcement and whatever budget discussions you wish to present. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna go on record, I love these meetings.
They're getting better.
Especially the long ones, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, did you get that, Madam Clerk?
For clarification, the library's positions that were requested were all included, they are just staggered, I did not cut any of the positions.
Yes.
And the recommended. The other item is the budget public hearing is scheduled for Monday, June sixteenth at six o'clock. You can also, um, the board is able to, um, adopt the budget that not if, if so chooses to. Otherwise, it will need to schedule a special meeting to consider the budget adoption.
Yes, ma'am.
And.
Before June thirtieth.
Yeah, before June thirtieth. Um, I just wanted to take a chance to express my appreciation to our department heads to begin with. The department heads all worked hard and produced reasonable budgets. They tried to hold the line on their operational costs to help offset the cost of positions that they requested. Twenty-eight position request, um, I know when I was hearing that number, I was like, oh geez. After sitting down with every single department head, I will have to say to you that every one of the positions requested has a valid validity and, you know, it would be wonderful if I could fund them all. I won't say that there's not one of them that's not needed, um, when you listen to those department heads. However, given the restraints that we have, you have to pick and choose. The county's made a forty million dollar investment into the Lee County Athletic Park. It is going to take staff to operate it, maintain it, and keep it in good shape so that people will want to come and use that park for various activities, tournaments, et cetera. Will it, will only help increase the revenue that that facility can came, can bring in and help offset the cost. In addition, you've spent a great deal of money building a, what's gonna be a fabulous library. It is almost doubling the space. They are going to need more staff in that facility to keep eyes on all that space, to make sure that nothing inappropriate is going on in our library. As I explained to one commissioner, the days that were, I grew up and we went to one section of the library and nobody saw you for two hours or gone. You can't do that in this day and time. So it has been very difficult to pick and choose. I did talk to the sheriff and expressed to him that I just didn't see a way I could do those positions this year. And he seemed amiable to it and understood the situation the county was in. I want to express my deepest appreciation to the administration staff, the entire group, for their diligence and their support through this process. I want to especially recognize Ben McCreary for all of his hard work in helping me get through this budget and through the presentation of the documents in this presentation tonight. I want to also thank Human Resources and Finance for their, um, contribute, contrib- contributions to this budget. And also to the Board of Commissioners for your consideration. At this time, I'll be glad to answer any questions there are related to this document at this time.
Commission, yeah, questions from the commissioners for the manager, Commissioner Martin?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
One item I'm looking at that is been a topic of discussion for a few months now under Lee County Schools. The request, current expenses, full implementation of their pay plan, is that correct?
They've asked for enough funding to fully fund that.
And, and current budget, we're considering it is.
No, I'm not giving them enough money to get, fully cover that.
Okay.
They would need in excess of two million dollars to cover that and they're only getting eight hundred and thirty.
I see that now, I'm sorry, yeah, okay. I was looking at that wrong, thank you, no other questions?
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbik?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
Uh, yes, I, I know that we, uh, you were given a directive to bring a no tax increase. Do you have what would have been your actual recommendation at this time?
Yes, sir, I would have recommended a one and a half cent tax increase. That would have, I was, do you, I'd assume you want to know what that would have gone towards? Sorry, um, that would have funded the expenses for the general services department. It would have kept the, let me back up, it would have kept the debt service portion at six point three five cents, not dropped that. And it would have covered the house, um, the two positions at general services that are related to the park and eventually to the library. It would have covered the library positions, um, the staggered library positions at one and a half cents, the recreation positions, the library temporary salaries, and the library utilities. It would have covered the additional operational costs for Lee County Athletic Park. And would also cover the general services increases that were related to the park and also the Morelli, um, the Moore Center facility cost. That one and a half cent that I proposed would have also increased the school funding by another three hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars to bring them up to the same percentage increase in their current expense budget that we saw in our property tax base. That has been one of the issues that they've raised over the last year to you, that they were not getting that much. So I had strived to get there, so basically that one and a half cent would have only covered new cost. We had, I had balanced the budget, continuation budget without a tax increase. So the tax increase that I would have proposed would have covered strictly new cost in the budget and maintained our debt service, um, plan.
Commissioner Sharp?
You finish, Mr. Reeves?
No, I was gonna mention, one of the things I noticed in this year's, uh, budget presentation was, I remember asking about the CIP and whether or not there would be a, uh, operations budget attached to it. And for some reason, I, I didn't follow up on it and I probably should have, I admit that. But it would seem to me anytime we're building anything, we ought to have attached to that request for the building an operational budget to go along with it. Because what I'm hearing right now is we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do next year as well right now.
Yes, sir.
Does that sound right?
Yes, sir, um, you're gonna, best guess, we hope that the park and the library have adjusted their staff. I know back at the retreat, we showed you that Lee County Library will probably be asking for more, more positions next year. Parks and Recreation is running this, um, after talking to Mr. Keel. He's running this park on a very tight number of people based on recommendations he's received and talking to other people who run similar type parks. So next year, you're gonna be faced with more cost in addition, um, to that. So, and of course our ongoing expenses go up every year. To your preference, to the capital improvements program and operating costs, we have on our forms a request for operating numbers. In the thirty-plus years that I've worked on the CIP, we don't get much. And, um, you know, we ask for it, they don't provide or say there won't be any operating costs when inevitably there are. You can't build a new school, you can't add another building without some additional operating costs, just like I told you. Yeah, you may save money on the utilities at the library, or it may come out about the same because the old library's, um, sun, um, skylights and stuff. But you don't have other operating costs that go up. So, um, I don't know if it'll give us more emphasis if y'all, the board, take action and say, if a project comes in without any operating costs, that it's not gonna be considered, it can be sent back to the agency or department that submits it. I don't know if that'll make them be more realistic of it or what, but we've not had much success in getting that information.
That actually ought to be a part of our policy.
Can make a motion if you like.
We can make a motion, yeah, you can make a motion.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Reeves makes a motion to include in our policy, any capital improvements shall include the operating costs into the future.
And I would like to, can we add to that a must provide, you know, 'cause I mean, it is hard to, to budget future operating costs. But ob- obviously if you're, if you're putting forth a project information, you've already, I would assume, done your due diligence with what other facilities are operating at, like, so you should have, if you already know what the X amount's gonna cost, you're not just pulling that out of thin air. So could we, with their operating expense, they also put in like a rough three-year, two-year proposal of what the future looks like, what they would like? And without that, it shouldn't even come to the board.
All right.
I think it's in the instructions that are provided to the departments and outside agencies, I don't know that we have a policy per se, but we can include it in the instructions.
We would like to be able to include in the instructions, as she said, a statement that the board has adopted this, that all projects have to have operating costs to be considered.
All right.
Commissioner Vorbik, are you suggesting that we should also include like a timeframe on that, like a three-year or a five-year projection?
It needs to be at least a three-year projection for us to be able to incorporate that.
Commissioner Reeves, do you wish to add three years?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any further discussion? You've heard the motion. Madam Clerk, could you read it to us, please?
So, any new CIP projects would include, um, operational costs as well as three-year, uh, projections with it, as a statement in the CIP form instructions?
Clear. All right, you heard the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp, we haven't gotten your questions.
Yeah, um, do you think the budget you presented, um, meets our needs, number one? And number two, do you think it's a, a responsible budget?
Does it meet the needs? Not a hundred percent. You've seen this, as I said, a lot of these positions are, that I didn't fund, probably are needed, there's no doubt. Is it a financially responsible budget? It is for this year. However, if you continue to not, if you don't increase that debt service funding back up, you're going to delay projects. You just recently passed the CIP where you pushed everything back, pretty much out of the five-year scope because you wanna wait until you can afford to do them without a tax increase. By delete, lowering that amount, going to that debt service, that debt service fund or capital reserve fund, you're delaying those projects. That is how, and that's how we've gotten to where we are today, where I can look at you and say, you can do four million dollars in debt without a tax increase, is because we took steps, started back right before we did WB Wick. Um, we were at a retreat with you guys and this Commissioner Reeves said, I can go for this school if we can do it without a debt increase. Well, I started working with numbers, worked with Davenport. We couldn't do it without a tax increase per se, but we could go ahead and do a tax increase upfront that was going to be lower than it would be if we waited. And that started where we done this, we've done it several other times. We had a very large tax increase one year and we put part of that to debt service. We've made other sit, times where we could have lowered the rate and the board made the decision to go ahead and increase the debt service funding. We cannot just magically start building schools or, what's the other, a jail, that's another major project we have on our horizon, without debt unless we do build our capital reserves. Well, you can't build your capital reserves and continue to operate the county on the same amount of tax rate unless you have phenomenal growth. Okay, yes, we've got a lot of housing coming on, it's not coming on quickly and the re, understand, a four hundred thousand dollar home, if they have one child in it, what they pay in taxes does not even cover what we spend on one child in school. So if these new homes are filled with people with two and three children, we're already in the hole. So we've got to have industry coming in and those don't come, but so quickly. We've got Kia Wakirin, hopefully that's gonna start hitting our tax books majorly next year, but we've got an incentive tied to it. But we, you know, hopefully our other industries will continue to grow and invest and hopefully we'll get something else new. But I wish I could tell you differently, I've been doing this a long time, it's not gonna happen overnight. Other counties you may hear are doing it, but it's because they made decisions other times, Chatham County's one of them. They made decisions several years ago at a revow to not lower their rate so that they could build their capital reserves. That's one reason they've been able to do certain projects that you may hear about and things like that. We've not made those types of significant decisions. I understand the tax rate, I'm, I'm a Lee County taxpayer, I hear it, um, when our tax rate goes up, trust me. I have a husband who's a budgeter, um, I hear it too. But if you want to ever get to that point, you've got to take a step somewhere along the way. Growth by itself is not gonna do it, I've seen our tax base grow an awful lot, but we also have services. You're also possibly gonna be faced with things coming down from the changes at the federal and state level. If the feds stop paying for certain programs but still mandate those programs have to be offered, that's only be pushed, that pushes that funding down to the state. The state's not got so much money either and doesn't want to raise taxes, so guess where they're gonna go? They're gonna come to the counties and expect us to pick up a larger burden again. And that's going to impact what you have the ability to do. So, yes, to answer your question, Cameron, I apologize, I went off with my tangent there. But yes, this budget, can I say to you, is financially responsible? Yes, sir, I feel like it is for this one year. I would not recommend that you continue to lower that tax, um, tax rate going to the debt and the capital reserve. I would recommend that you do everything in your power to bring it back up next year. And I personally would recommend that it start growing if you want to be able to accomplish projects down the road.
And I think I hear you saying, we're gonna be faced with a higher tax increase in the future.
If, if you possibly could.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
In the, and I, I know I read it in here, I was trying to find it, how many vacancies do we currently have within the workforce in the county?
We have eighteen at this time compared to sixteen at this time last year.
I, I did see that number, okay, thank you. And just a reminder, uh, I enjoy listening to WNC in the morning because they're always talking about Wake County and Durham County. And both of those counties took dramatic cuts to their school budget requests. So, for those that keep talking about running up to Wake County and Durham to work for the schools, just remember, they had some cuts. Thank you, ma'am, and I'm gonna take the prerogative of taking a ten-minute break. And if, Colleen, would you be so kind to put the timer up there, please? Uh, we are recessed for ten minutes. We're here. Thank you for that recess. Next item on the agenda is the Consider Pay Adjustment Request from the Lee County Board of Education, and Jennifer, are you gonna take this? You're, you entered it, I got the letter, I'll just read it. There we go. Letters from the Chair, Lee County Board of Education, to the Chairman of the Lee County Board of Commissioners. Dear Commissioners, on behalf of the Lee County Board of Education, I am writing to respectfully and formally request your consideration and support for a reasonable adjustment to the compensation of school board members. The Lee County Board of Education is responsible for setting the vision and providing oversight for the Lee County school system, which includes seventeen schools, more than nine thousand students, over one thousand two hundred employees, and an annual budget of approximately one hundred and thirty million dollars. This makes the school system not only the largest educational institution in the county, but also one of its largest employers. Board members are required by statute to complete at least twelve hours of training every two years, and also serve on various committees that conduct much of the board's work. The responsibilities of board members often require a time commitment exceeding forty hours per month, much of which must be fulfilled using personal vacation time from primary employment. The complexity and demands of the role continue to increase as we confront challenges related to economic growth, teacher and staff retention, school safety, infrastructure needs, and academic performance. It is important to note that the current monthly stipend for board members has not been adjusted since fiscal year twenty twenty-two, excuse me, two thousand two and two thousand three, more than twenty-three years ago. During that time, the cost of living has risen significantly, and the responsibilities of board members have expanded substantially. When compared to similarly sized districts, both regionally and statewide, Lee County Schools, School Board compensation ranks among the lowest. This disparage, disparity has broader implications for democratic representation. Inadequate or symbolic compensation can limit who is able to serve, effectively excluding working-class citizens, single parents, and caregivers who cannot afford to volunteer the time required. Fair and modest compensation makes public service more accessible to a broader and more representative group of citizens. This request is not about rewarding politicians, it is about recognizing the professional-level demands of the role in promoting inclusive and effective governance. We are requesting that school board compensation be adjusted to match that of the Lee County Board of Commissioners. We believe this request is reasonable, transparent, fiscally responsible, and aligned with the best practices in public service compensation. Thank you for your time, consideration, and your continued commitment to the people of Lee County, and to the success of our public schools. Sincerely, Sherilyn Womack, Lieutenant Colonel, U.S. Army Retired, Lee County Chair, Board of Education. There is the request, questions and discussions. I'm assuming, Eric, you're able to speak on behalf of the board? If any questions come your way?
Yes, come your way, yes.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Sharp, any questions?
I don't have any right to say that.
Commissioner Reeves?
Well, I don't have a question, I have a statement, I'll simply say that we don't do the same jobs, and I am prepared to offer a motion for increase of the COLA, like we get.
The motion to increase the COLA for the Board of Education? And the stipend?
What is that? Do you know what that equals out to?
No.
Okay.
That's why we got finance people.
Agreed. I just was curious what that amount would be.
I am, too.
For the chair position, it would amount to a hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents. For the individual board members, it would amount to a hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty cents?
As an increase, correct?
I mean, sorry, yeah, a hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty cents of an increase for a total, for all the position, eight hundred and forty dollars for a year.
What was the year, I'm sorry?
It would equate to eight hundred and forty dollars total for all the positions for a year.
If I did my math correctly.
That is the increase, correct?
That is the increase. The total increase for the year.
So it would put their, their monthly, so specifically their monthly compensation?
I know, that's what I'm trying to get to.
It'd be four hundred and thirty and change, I believe, is, is that, so it's three hundred now, is that correct?
Three fifty. No.
Three fifty, something like that.
It's forty-eight hundred dollars a year, so let me do the math, that's where they are currently, they have had an increase. They have had an increase since two thousand two.
Yeah.
They were increased back in twenty fourteen, I believe. So forty-eight hundred dollars for the chairman divided by twelve is four hundred dollars a month currently, forty-two hundred divided by twelve is three hundred and fifty, so three fifty times one point oh two eight, would bring them up to basically three hundred and sixty dollars a month. Chairperson is forty-eight hundred, twelve is four hundred, three hundred, four hundred times one point two eight. Chairman would go up to four hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents a month. At the two-point-eight percent COLA that we're currently getting, I think.
When, when did we start giving COLAs? Have we, have we always done, I mean, when did those begin?
We have done COLAs for as long as I've been with the county, except for one year, I believe, during my tenure here, that we not do a COLA. It's been as low as maybe a half a percent, but we have tried our best to consistently do COLAs for our staff to keep up with the cost of living.
I, I hear the conversation surrounding COLA, I'm, I'm just wondering if, if the suggestion for the, for the COLA would be like, back from the, you know, the, the last, like, are we gonna do it, is it being suggested just a COLA right now for this increase? Or a COLA sort of dating back to when they have, all the COLAs that they missed?
Oh, no.
Just this one?
Just this one.
Well, I mean, it's a reasonable question, they haven't, if they haven't had a, a raise since, or, you know, any, there hasn't been conversations surrounding it on the Board of Commissioners since, you're saying, two thousand and fourteen?
That's the last time I've seen that they've had the adjustment, that's what was provided to me about the school system.
Okay. Then, if, if that's the case, then, then that's ten years, or eleven years, of no increase, so, I just didn't know if you were thinking of going back and doing, you know, pay from that point on. I, let, did, did you have something, Commissioner?
No, I'm saying that would be difficult, because there's different numbers.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I, you know, I'm, I'm gonna, I serve as a school liaison, so, I, I would propose that we go a little higher than that.
You wish to amend?
So I think you make a separate motion.
Oh, I don't wanna, I don't wanna disregard yours, so I, I, I mean, I don't know if this is a discussion, or if that's a motion?
You made a motion.
Well, we have the motion, and I don't have input from everybody else, so.
Okay.
You want to raise just the cost of living allowance?
That's correct.
Okay.
And not go back, it's not Christmas.
Not retro-rite.
Right, that's the one I was looking for, thank you.
Any further discussion on that, Commissioner?
I think my only statement is, one of the things is, that inadequate or symbolic compensation can limit who is able to serve, effectively excluding working-class citizens. I mean, my paycheck says five dollars and four cents an hour for the county commissioners, I don't, I don't pay, like, so it's still going to require someone to go get another job, or be retired, like, making, that is not a very good statement on trying to make it equal pay, I mean, it's not, it's not a livable wage anyways, so you still have to, and then the boards that we sit on, I mean, I drive to Smithfield every three months, and on three other boards, like, I mean, that's a, it's a definite different thing, I'm in support of that COLA.
Yeah, I guess my, my position is, we're not doing the same jobs.
No.
By any means. And it is my understanding, in some cases, when a teacher drives a bus, they get an entirely different pay rate than the regular bus drivers, is what I'm told, I don't know, I don't drive buses. But I think if that's the way they're being treated, why would I want to do the same job, have them get paid the same as I get paid, when they're not, we're not doing the same job?
And just for clarification on the bus drivers, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Davidson, it's based on, that was COVID monies that was rerouted to increase teachers driving buses? So that was a temporary COVID thing?
Well, if it was COVID, man, why didn't it do everybody?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
I agree that we're not in the, we don't have the same, it's not the same job, right, one's in support of- One's the Board of Commissioner and one's the Board of Education. But I, I don't know that that's the question that we should be asking, is it the same job or not the same job? I think the question is, is, I think it's twofold. One, we, as, as the Board of Commissioners, are responsible to set the salary or the compensation for the Board of, of Education members, and we have-
We're one of the entities. It can also come from the legislature.
Well, but, okay, but it's not. It's us.
I know.
And we have a long history of, of compensating our staff in a very fair and generous way, to the point of, of, of county manager earlier saying that, you know, that we've, we keep our COLAs where they should be, and we have the step increases, and we have extraordinary amount of benefits, because we are gracious and generous as a county with our employees. I, I would like that to extend to the Board of Education also. There are, the question really isn't, is it the same job to me? It's, do, is it the same amount of work? Does it, is it the same amount of work to serve on the Board of Education as it is? Same amount of effort, the same amount of time, is it the same skills? Yes, it is. It's, there are board, there are, there's seven of us, there are, you know, some of us put in more time than others, and there are the seven Board of Education members, some of whom put in just as much time as we do. You know, so I, I think when we look at a board, we're talking about seven and seven, my guess is if we all were really honest about the amount of time that we put in for our roles, and they were really honest about the time that they put into their roles, it'd be quite similar. I mean, I've been on calls for hours, and I've watched people drive back and forth to Raleigh, you know, Smithfield, Raleigh, wherever it is, on their own dime, doing their own thing, with their required trainings, with this state saying, no, you're not gonna have money for this, but oh, here's a new, you know, here's a new requirement, you have to sit down and figure all this out. That all falls on the Board of Education members. And one of the things that I, I think we might miss, because it, it's just not something that we think about, the Board of Education are the individuals, I mean, we're asking people to sit in this extraordinarily important role, right? I mean, they're deciding the direction of our students. They're highly-
We didn't ask them, they got voted into it.
Right, but we're asking, we as, we as, not the Board of Commissioners, we as voters are asking this person to sit in this stead, and, and they're going to vote for the, the superintendent, right? They're going to vote for the policies, they're gonna do all the report, they're responsible for the direction of our schools. So to say it's not the same job, no, it isn't, because I would never be on the Board of Education. I mean, that's just a lot of work. And, and, you know, you have to have someone who really, really cares to put that type of energy and time into giving directives. I, I would make a motion for equal compensation for the Board of Commissioners.
We have a motion already.
Okay.
So we'll continue discussing that, and then we can vote on it.
That sounds good.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
I guess what I'd like to have seen maybe on this is layout, instead of trying to compare salaries or whatever you call our pay, is what other Board of Education members would make.
They did that presentation for us, like, I don't know, six, seven months ago?
Yeah.
Well, you volunteer to run, that's how you get there.
In other words, in the letter, though, that was sent out, it'd been nice to see, in my opinion, it gave me a better understanding, I think.
That's a good point, that, you know, that, like, just to see what the-
Yeah, because what we have to do, as, as, say, our deputies, we have to compare them to around what other departments are compensating and, and benefits to, but I, I guess that's the only thing, I guess I'd like to see a little different, give me a better idea.
And the presentation they gave, the same average school system size, same Board of Education size, the monthly average, they fell in line with about a five thirty a month average.
Eric, would you be, would you come to the podium, please?
What are we doing? What's our number?
Three fifty.
Could you, could you please describe your roles on the Board of Education and the hours you put in, in one week?
Every week's different. Uh, two days this week, I'm gonna sit in two-hour meetings to hear student appeals about where their schools are, so that's four hours this week. I've been here since six o'clock, so that's a couple hours. Reese, preparing, four meetings, I read through the budget today, the entire county budget today. I, I probably spent hour, hour and a half going through the budget. Uh, I mean, it's, and, and that's just, I have a, I serve on the Operations Committee. It meets once a month, but we have four total committees, and all, all board members are, are assigned to those. Some board members have two committees that they actually serve on. I only have one because I'm the liaison to the Board of Commissioners. And so, I don't know, it, it's easily ten hours a week of time, forty hours a month.
Does that include your board meeting?
If you include our board meetings, yeah, because some weeks you don't have as much as you do other meetings. I mean, I've never sat down and done a log of my time, maybe I should do that, to see actually how, no, I don't wanna do that, because I don't wanna know how much I'm making an hour, based on that either, so. I think one, I think the thing that it's, is just the sense of the value of what it means to be a school board member versus the value of what it means to be on the Board of Commissioners. I, I don't think that speaks well to us as a county.
Was your pay disclosed when you chose to run?
Yes, it was.
I just was checking.
Yeah.
Okay.
We knew, and we run, we ran anyway.
Yeah.
And we serve anyway. So, yeah, we, we were not surprised by what we're being paid. You gotta take out taxes, so I think I clear maybe three hundred and twenty-three dollars a month for forty hours. It's not even a dollar an hour, is it? Looking at it that way. So, you ask, so.
Okay, yes, sir.
That's the best I can do off, off the cuff.
Any, any other questions for Mr. Davidson? Okay, we have the motion, any further discussion? Motion is to increase the Board of Education stipend by the COLA rate, the current COLA rate.
Can, can I make a comment?
Please.
I, I would please like mine to go back to the county, because evidently the county needs it more than I do. I think that COLA is a slap in the face.
Like that thousand.
I would gladly, you keep my COLA.
All right.
No, Commissioner, um, Chair, may I ask a question?
Well, thank you.
Uh, the motion's been made, any further discussion?
Well, you, you can always make an amendment to a motion if you choose.
Yes, accepted.
I don't know, that's what I'm curious about.
You can always amend a motion if you choose.
Similar, I don't know what the motion to amend is gonna be, then we have to vote on that, then back to the original, but, I mean, the motion was to increase it to the COLA, so I'm not, I'm not sure what your amendment's gonna be.
I, I think we have to, I, I don't, I don't know what, what the process is right now, but I would, I think I have to make an amended motion, if I would like to go above, make a motion to go above the COLA, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
You can make an amendment.
So if you wanna go COLA plus, then you have to make amendment that we vote on.
That.
I'll make a separate one, I will draw my motion and take a motion.
All right. Your, your motion has been withdrawn.
Yeah.
Your motion-
So, before I, before I make my motion, let me, let me say this, I did spend a couple of hours, uh, earlier this, what is today, Monday, late last week, probably Thursday night, I spent a couple of hours, um, just looking at different counties throughout North Carolina for both commissioner pay and, and school board compensation, and how the decisions are made, and the different percentages between the, between the two, just, just trying to educate myself, basically, on how these decisions are made. And we all want to be receiving Wake County commissioner pay, is what I discovered. But, uh, they're-
Theirs is a livable wage.
Well, actually, they're gonna vote to increase their salary a hundred and thirty-two percent.
Yeah.
To, to over a hundred thousand a year. But, um, either way, back, back to my, my point in all seriousness, it really does fall down to, um, you know, the, the Board of Commissioners to make that decision. And, and on that, I, I would say that I would make a motion for equal compensation for the two boards. We do two different jobs, but two equally responsible jobs, both to the county and then to the, the Board of Education. So my motion is for, um, to grant the Board of Education the same pay that the Board of Commissioners made.
All right, that motion is to increase the Board of Education stipend to the same level as the Board of Commissioners. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll just make this comment, I told Dr. Crumpton years ago, I said, I can't understand how, how you managers are not upset and fighting for, at the very least, equal pay to the Board of Education superintendents. You do twice the work, twice or more the responsibility, and yet you settle for this minimum wage salary. It took us years, and he finally accepted the fact that, you know, you were right, I got more responsibilities, and I knew that that was the case. There's no comparison of what we have to do, our responsibilities. And sometimes the length of time it takes is because perhaps you don't know what you're doing, so it can make a job longer. But I submit to you that I can't support full pay for the Board of Education.
Understood. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can I, those opposed?
No.
All right.
So, so where do we stand?
So we're gonna make a-
Are we going back to your original motion?
Yes.
All right, so.
And your original motion is to increase by the-
Two point eight percent.
By two point eight percent. Okay.
So did we ever figure out what comparable pay is in other counties on both sides?
Uh, you have a question?
There was a whole presentation done, and I'm not misquoting, like, the app, if you ran the names, it was in that five thirty. I'm just, like, I, I mean, they made an entire presentation, I mean, it was, like, forty minutes, I just don't remember, I can't bring the date of what it was, but they brought all hundred counties on what they currently made, it had three or four different columns of, but anyways, go with your motion.
Surely one of us will remember that, but-
I had those emails from March of two thousand and four, two thousand and twenty-four, but I don't remember.
She wasn't, she wasn't on the board.
We have looked, I have done just some random research, Ben and I were both looking today on the internet, and it's hard to find one location, you may find this year's what one school board did and one versus the other. So, I mean, I can give you some round numbers here, but to sit down and try to say which ones are community size, which ones not, I have not done that. I mean, to me, that's the school's responsibility, they're the one asking.
Yeah.
Should provide that information to you.
Well, let me ask you this way, are there other counties that, where their school board is making the same as the county commissioners? Or is it seemed to go toward a trend of the salaries are different?
Dare County just approved it back in January of this year to bring their school board up to, I think, competent to what their commissioners made, that's the only one I can find.
Dare County.
Dare County.
So, one county?
That's the only one that I can tell you that I've been able to tie to. I have not sat down and tried to go find every counties, I don't have, the budget presentation was my top, completing the budget and preparing the presentation, really, that was my top priority. Schools have staff that can pull that information probably faster than we can go get it.
Well, since they were just here not too long ago, I wondered if that's where this idea come from. My motion is on the floor.
Yes, sir. All right, so the motion is to increase the school board member's stipend by the cost of living rate that is currently there. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
We have two opposed.
Can I make a, a motion off of that motion?
What's that?
No. It's a new motion, but that motion-
Can I make another motion and see if we can at least bring it up to the number that you, what, tell the, I'm sorry, can you just have a key?
It was like five thirty.
Five thirty?
Yeah.
What's five thirty?
It was that median, it was the information they, I mean, I didn't expect to bring it with me.
No, 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 no problem, no problem. I just, I mean, I, I had hoped that we would agree to, to, you know, be equal compensation. But, but the, you, you're, I would make a motion that we start at five thirty as pay and then put the two point eight percent increase. Oh.
Well, I'd ask you to consider waiting and review it in the upcoming twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven budget.
Motion is on?
Can we hype a, a motion on top of a motion?
I don't think it's a motion on top, I think this motion stands, so at, right, as of right now, the, the pay is the two, two point eight percent COLA.
Increase COLA.
I guess this is now a new motion for it to be five thirty, is that both the, I mean, the chair is different than the-
Yeah, that was like, that was like what the base-
And I'm not opposing her motion, I'm just asking, would she consider waiting until we've studied this issue a little closer?
Because we, we need to know that total. I'm kind of confused.
I personally would suggest that if you want to reconsider anything for this fiscal year, that you ask the school board to provide you information on what other counties pay, and then consider it at your work session, and then you could take a formal vote on the, well, you could take a vote at, on the work session, we can add it as a separate agenda item, at, separate from budget discussion, that you consider, that reconsider this, if that's what the board chooses. That way you can ask for that information to be provided to you, and so you have the exact numbers, would be what I would recommend to you.
Now, is this for the ninth meeting?
Eric, do you know any of that, or is that something you can bring up?
You could do it at the ninth meeting, or you can do it at the sixteenth meeting, whichever one you prefer to do, but I would, I would recommend that you get information from them, and they may have provided it before, but you don't have it before you tonight. And I'm not saying your memory's not great, Taylor, but, um, you're a misforeb, but I would recommend that you consider, make sure all the board members have that information, that works.
So let's give guidance to Board of Education and provide a set for our-
Are you good with that?
June ninth meeting?
Samantha?
Yes.
That's a week, right?
June ninth meeting, that's next Monday. Starts at six.
Does that include the information you were talking about, the five thirty thing? I don't know where that came from.
And I can look, I mean, I know I still have it, so.
Fine, thank you.
Okay, so we'll work on that Monday. Six o'clock, be there. And you're set, Eric, on providing that, getting it to us? Thank you. Okay, Managers' Report.
Yes, sir, I'm gonna ask Angelina to come up and introduce our newest intern that we have on our staff now.
We have an intern.
One of two we've got coming.
So, good afternoon, Commissioners, um, so it's a pleasure for me to introduce, um, Saikia Parker. Ms. Parker, if you wanna come up and join me, is a UNC MPA student, and she is, um, having a short stay this summer, um, with us in administration, working with both, um, administration and human resources, and so I wanted to introduce her to the board, um, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Parker, she is a Sanford resident.
Here, here.
That's what I was gonna say, um, just good evening, um, Angelina said, my name is Saikia, I'm a Chapel Hill student, um, in the MPA program, and I am a Lee County resident, and I'm just excited for what I'll learn with the county this, this summer.
She has worked with Cumberland County also before.
Yes.
Well, you don't have to drive this far.
Yes, which is exciting, I live right up through, like, five minutes, so.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Not a question, but a congratulations.
And we do have eighteen positions open. And we do have eighteen positions open if you're interested. Okay, thank you.
The other item is, I think, um, Ms. Hall needs to address you on something on boards and commissions.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Minter. Um, so at your seats, you have a memo from me, as well as, uh, all the applications for our boards and commissions that we've received, even some as far back as July twenty twenty-four, when, uh, voting had already closed, um, during that appointment period. Uh, so all of those are included. Uh, they've all been verified by our tax office. Some, um, were even coming in today still, so I apologize. I don't have a draft ballot for you. I will email that. Hopefully I'll get that done tomorrow and, or print that, um, for Commissioners Reeves and Sharp. So you all have that information, um, as well as any that we might have received. I left around three thirty today, so technically they had till the end of today to, to get that in. Um, but lots of great applications, so that is fantastic, uh, that we have so many residents that like to serve on our boards and commissions. Um, I will go ahead and point out, since it is a, a popular board, that we do have a vacancy on our CCCC Board of Trustees. So, just gonna throw that out there, uh, for your consideration. We did get a couple of applications for that, uh, which is in the packet, in no particular order, I should also mention. So, if you have any questions, please, uh, feel free to reach out to me, and I'll try to get everything else to you as quickly as I can this week, so.
Okay.
We can vote on it. Uh, you all can consider voting on June sixteenth.
Okay. Before we go, before we go to, uh, closed session, we have Commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Sharp.
I don't have anything, other than, uh, thank Lisa for your presentation and, um, and all your staff for, um, everything that they've done to, uh, bring us all together.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves.
Yeah, I just wanna apologize to the manager and her staff for all the work he had to do to get us where we are today with the budget. The other thing I would like to mention is, at some point in time, we really need to sit down with the city, uh, for the simple reason, the more annexations they make, the more pressure they put on law enforcement and fire departments. And that truly needs to be dealt with sooner rather than later, because the problem is only gonna get worse.
And our school system.
Now, we asked for, we asked for a letter for that, didn't we? Didn't we send a letter out for that? What their plan was?
We were supposed to.
Did, did we, did we do that last meeting? Ask for letters to the city?
Don't see.
With their plan they have for, um-
I think there was a formal request for a letter. I have spoken to, um, Mr. Egwir at the city. And, yeah, according to him, they are managing it, but I think Mr. Reeves is correct. You need to probably have a sit-down discussion from board to board.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm sorry. But y'all, I mean, the reason I say that, because I've just got a dirty look, is because-
She wasn't a dirty look.
I'm sorry, I gotta look.
That's like, okay, that sounds like another board-to-board meeting.
I work for you. And he works for his board. So, really, we have to get that direction from you guys, and so you guys need to talk to them, either through the inter-local meeting, or going ahead and doing a joint, full joint board meeting, whatever the board so chooses. I'll be glad, based on your direction, to try to arrange something. I would like to mention, I forgot to th- mention one thing when we were talking about sales tax during the budget, and your annexation comment reminded me of that. We are starting to see the impact of the city's annexations on our sales tax revenue. Um, because of them taking in more area, that's increasing their portion of the levy versus ours. If their borders had stayed the same and they grow, we also grow. But with them growing outside those original borders, it is now starting to affect that. If you look at the county versus the county total collections, you can see it in the total. Our total is less than the overall total now, and that's where you're starting to see that impact. So I apologize for interrupting y'all's comments. I just wanted to point that out.
So let's direct the county manager to coordinate a joint board and city council meeting. And hopefully they will reciprocate.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Vorby.
Um, I wanna kind of piggyback on that. Is that, Lisa, is that something, kind of your description or, uh, explanation of that? Is that something that, um, Jana, or, not Jana, not Jana, is it Jana? With, could-
The Grant Rider?
No, that's not what, wrong name. Um- Thank you, yes. Okay, it is Jana. Okay, that's what I thought. Yes, there we go. Okay, that possibly on, because she did a really good job. I know that when, on our board retreat, explaining sales tax and stuff, that would be another really good thing, I think, to, on a future meeting, to kind of have, um, to kind of piggyback on what the annexation is doing and kind of the stressors it's putting. Because even though, I mean, I know you said fire and, and police, but, you know, if you're putting a, you know, the beginning of our budget presentation said the average home price was two hundred and sixteen thousand, and we need at least a four hundred thousand dollar home to cover a, a student, you know, like, there's other, and then social services and people that are coming into Medicaid and, 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 um, yes. So, I, it's, it's multiple things, but I think having that, what that looks like would also help be able to plan in having those conversations with the city. So, anyways. No other comment, other than that?
Commissioner Connect.
I, I think that's one of the main things we talked about when we talked about losing farmland, was that particular thing. But if we talked to the prior mayor, I think he, the only reason why we're one out of two counties was, was for industrial growth. It wasn't for residential growth outside the, the zone. But, um, it seems that they're going outside the zone regardless, even though they agreed it was just for industrial purposes. So, I mean, that's something to think about again. But, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick.
Just piggyback on some of the other ones. Thank you to the staff of the budget, lot of work, and, uh, thank you so much for that. And welcome Mrs. Saikia to the county, and it's good to see you during the breaks of rain. Our parks are being used. That's just a good feeling when you go by and see parks, money that county spent on, that people enjoying those and they're being used, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin.
No, thank you.
I have a few things. Uh, first off, Wednesday at ten o'clock, from twelve, we have a re-entry simulation going on at the city's general services building. Also on Wednesday, after three thirty to five P M., I'll be sitting on a panel with Secretary of State Elaine Marshall for a small business forum at the Central Carolina Community College. I understand Commissioner Vorby is gonna be attending with me. Anyone else interested? I put that invitation out weeks ago.
Wednesday at three twenty?
Wednesday at three, three thirty at the, um, Civic Center. And I brought back from Central Pines, I gave you an, all a note on Central Pines, that one of them was the his, the, uh, manufacturing and growth in North Carolina and the region. But here's the ombudsman for our services that are provided by the Central Pines, uh, regarding our nursing and adult care homes. So, I had information there for you that I brought back. Without further ado, I just wanted to say thank you very much to the staff, the county manager, the assistant managers, all the department heads, and all the people that put together our budget. It is definitely enlightening to know where we're going and how we're gonna get there, and I just want to say thank you very much for that. Without further ado-
Commissioner-
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize, staff just brought up one more thing. Um, on June sixteenth, we will be hosting the young commissioners prior to the regular board meeting. They will be meeting at four, if any of y'all would like to join us for that. We will also be serving dinner for them at five P M. that day, and you are welcome to join us for that also. If you plan to join us, though, for dinner, if you will let Haley know to make sure we have plenty of food, um, we'd appreciate that. It's at the Civic Center. I apologize, I think that's it.
Thank you. I totally forgot that one, too. So, thank you, staff. All right.
We, uh, I move that we go into closed session for NC General Statute one four three three one eight point one one eight five to discuss the acquisition of real property.
We are going into closed session. Motion's been made. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much. We're gonna sit right here.
Okay.
I'm reading this on behalf of Mr. Reeves. I move to authorize the chairman to enter a purchase agreement to be provided upon final negotiation by staff for the purchase of sixteen oh five, sixteen eleven Hawkins Avenue and zero Burns Drive in the amount of five million, three hundred thousand dollars, subject to the material terms as presented.
You've heard the motion? All those in favor signify by say, oh, as you were. Any discussion?
What was the lease? What was, what did they, what did they ask for a lease for that building?
So currently we're leasing at a rate of ten thousand dollars a month. That includes utilities and maintenance expenses. That was negotiated under the context that we were currently negotiating a
Did you ask if we didn't, if we just wanted to lease everything? Did you ask them just for, to lease everything moving forward? Did you ask them that?
That ten thousand dollar amount lease was originally just for the back section of the building. They agreed to let us use the full amount of the building based on the assumption that they were, knew we were in negotiations with them. That lease, that ten thousand dollar lease would not include all this, long term would not include all square footage, including the second building.
That's not the question I asked. The question I asked is what are they asking for if you just want to lease a building?
We did not ask them for the full space.
So I think that what they would have in mind is nine or ten dollars a square, but depending on what we would ask for improvement wise on the property. Because there were certain electrical needs that were needed on that back area. I don't have that calculation, but I would say that they're probably occupying about twenty-six thousand square feet in that warehouse space.
If you didn't get this building, what would you do? This building didn't exist, what would you do?
So the purchase agreement could go forward. I would say that we would go back to them to see what
No, I'm saying what happens if this building didn't exist at all? What would you do?
We would continue to search on the storage. We had another potential solution, but it wasn't a long-term solution because of the amount of square footage. And it wouldn't have suited the
So
Ultimately, if this had not come up.
Commissioner Martin also asked if you put out an RFI out there for everybody to tell what the county's looking for. Have you ever done that?
I heard. We have not. I've also asked, you know, our emergency services staff if they've ever heard of that done along with, you know, some of our other staff. And they haven't. I don't, I'm not saying that that hasn't been done anywhere else, but that's not typically the process that's followed for searching for storage space.
Or just purchase space in general.
But we, we look at a lot of different facilities and, you know.
I mean, some things, some things that are leased aren't available may be up for sale, but we don't realize it by an owner. And they may come forward and say, hey, I got something for you that I'm ready to get out of. You know what I'm saying?
It just depends on how you're trying to approach the project, I think, but, you know.
Well, the RFI has the, your needs that you're looking for, right? So if you put that out there, people can approach you, they may not approach you. And they go, hey, exactly what you're looking for. That, that may not be on the market per se, but it may be, you know, available if people have interest and they know that the interest is out there. I'm just throwing that out there. I don't, I don't know if you've ever done one. I don't know why we haven't done one.
I've not. And I haven't seen a lot of local governments pursue that particular method through property charging. But, I mean, I would just defer to the board on what they want to ask to do. And I think a motion in motion would take a while, Lee.
We have discussion here is what he asked for, so we have discussion.
I think, I, I think we can discuss real quick. I know we're all exhausted and ready to go home. But it, but Commissioner Warbeck and brought up the request to have a three to five sort of plan for, what was it, operating expenses? When we have proposals come to us, right? And I, I would almost want to ask the same question about this project, right? Like, what are we really looking at spending? Yes, we have seven, four or whatever on the books for the project. But, I mean, our goal isn't to spend all that, right? Our goal is to keep it like you did, lower the price and keep it as low as possible. So what are we really, what are we talking about when you, when you say, one of the things on the presentation is future space? You know, what you imagine this project being? How much money are we talking about? It's not just the purchase price, right? It's the, the loss of tax money if a business were to buy it. And the county manager just said that's what we need to increase our taxes is industry, not homes, right? But we're gonna consume, we're gonna, we're gonna pay five million. We're gonna take that off the market, so we won't be getting the taxes. And then we're gonna probably, I mean, I don't know. I wouldn't want to assume how much. Do we have any idea how much money, more money we'll put into that project?
I mean, I, I can't make an determination on full scope until we would have the full scope of the project identified as far as renovations are concerned. I can tell you that during, you know, a due diligence phase, I can certainly get a scope on, you know, what the operational costs are for the public safety side. And I'm sure we can get a projection on the cult side as well. So for the identifiable spaces, yes, we can certainly get projections and then we can get that back to the board. For the, the rest of the space, I would say that we probably can't get a full operational scope until that's identified.
Can I piggyback off of that? But you do have an idea of what the future of that building would look like?
Yes, I have an idea of what I envision for this eventually, depending on the cost and whether or not it will physically fit. We separated finance from administration last year. Yeah, I guess it's been about a year, year and a half ago. Because we literally were out growing Summit. I had to move somebody. And they were the only ones that would sit over at the buggy factory. I would love to get admin back together with finance. We work interchangeably with HR, finance, all that's legal. They, those functions work well together and need to be together. In addition, we would like to be able to get emergency management and fire marshal back together. So my plan, if I, if it works, and if I haven't spent the money to have somebody come in and analyze it yet because I don't want to waste money if we're not even consider this building, would be to see if that works. That would free up space at the courthouse, which you're going to need if you continue to expand the sheriff's staff. It would also free up the summit building, which would possibly, I haven't verified yet, if that will work for elections, which would get elections away from where they are now. We want to put community support in that space. And that frees up a lot of what we were wanting to do with the library. Tax is the next one that I would like to get moved somewhere. And my plan had hopefully been to move them to the buggy factory once the city moves their building, if they move out of the buggy factory. And that would get this county, the government center to be the human, health and human services building that we've envisioned for years that that should be. All that's moving pieces, all of us will depend on the cost. Once we figure out what it's gonna cost to renovate the Colts building, that'll help us indicate what we are. And we would possibly have enough money to bring in an engineer or architect, engineer, whatever we need to look at big building to see what is possible and how much storage space we lose and what that does if we need to do something on the outside to have lay down space for some of this stuff that's in storage. That's my big picture. Will it work? I can't tell you right this minute because I'm not paid to have somebody come in and look at it. Brandon has done some quick analysis. We think it could. Cost wise, I don't know. But it, I do feel like at least for the Colts and the storage facility, that we are gonna come out cheaper buying this building and at least using it for those two functions that we had planned at seven and a half million, which is probably not reasonable at this point in time. With all the inflation that's happened and the tariffs that are in place, I don't think you're gonna be able to build what we originally thought we could build for seven and a half million. I could be wrong, but I don't think I am, based on the numbers we're hearing. So that is long range where I would like to be. Of course, once we get past this first phase, see how much money there is left out of that project and see what we might, can do farther than that, then we'd come back to you with that. But everything would have to come back to the board before we do anything else to that building.
Any other questions? Motion's been made. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Can I get a show of hands on the ayes, please?
Do we need to go, Cameron?
Where did he go?
He may have had to run to the restroom. He left his stuff, so I think he's just ran out.
You don't need him.
A no vote, I guess. Or a silent vote, I guess.
Okay. All right. Motion passed. Motion to adjourn been made. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you very much. Please drive safely. Wear your seatbelts and no speeding.